The Department of Public Safety Leader Law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given said notice have been transmitted to the Curry News and Star Ledger on January 7, 2013, as well as posted on the voting board in the City Council. Madam President, Councilwoman Brown, Assistant Attorney General, Councilwoman Bree, Councilwoman Metz, Councilwoman Storch. Yes, I'm running about fifteen minutes. Councilwoman Storch, Assistant Attorney General, Councilwoman Williams, Chairman Reed, Council President Rivers. Here. We have a call. May we please rise to the President.
When we are in a quiet, we will have a change of order. A republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indelible with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly, we ask God, the giver of peace and a love of charity, to give the entire family of nations to agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the following minutes as presented? Regular meeting, May 13, 2013, and regular meeting, June 17, 2013.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Do we have any ceremonial matters, no listed?
None.
Communication for the mayor?
Yes. Correspondent dated June 25 from her Honorable Mayor Sharon Robinson Briggs, addressed to members of the government body requesting advice and consent to the appointment of Diana Sherry Ono to serve as treasurer for the city of Plainfield for a one-year term effective August 1, 2013, and ending July 31, 2014. Said term is effective immediately upon adoption and confirmation of over office. We have correspondent dated June 25, 2013, from her Honorable Mayor Sharon Robinson Briggs, addressed to members of the government body requesting advice and consent to the appointment of Ricky Williams to serve as commissioner of the Plainfield Housing Authority for a five-year term ending July 1, 2018. Said term is effective immediately upon adoption and confirmation of over office. For the purpose of demoralization, her Honorable Mayor Sharon Robinson Briggs has submitted a proclamation in celebration of the life, legacy, growth, and unity in memory of Lieutenant Thomas J. Love II.
Thank you, Madam President. Any other communication petitions?
No to report at this time.
Report of special committees?
No written reports submitted.
I would like to take a moment to suspend the regular order of business. Ms. Buncock asks to consider my can have a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
So moved.
All those?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair of the Council. I'm Dotte Guttmann, 414 Randolph Road in Plainfield. Like so many of us, I was appalled by the verdict in the Drake House Martin case. This is another example of a young black man winding his own business, who is ruthlessly killed by a vigilante who has just been acquitted by a jury of his peers. And I believe it's outrageous. And I would like to ask that the council, and I assume unanimously, pass a resolution as a special order of business. It's not on the agenda. Protesting the outcome of that trial and directing the mayor and the city council president to send a letter to President Obama and to Attorney General Holder requesting a full federal investigation of the civil rights issues raised in this case. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Council President, we can certainly, if the council so desires, we can air language for our next one's meeting, for council review, however, some of the council will allow or not to adopt a resolution about which we cooperate with the office.
Madam Chairman, I think it needs to be dealt with now. I do not think that you want to wait a month. There's a lot of pressure going on across, largely across the internet with petitions to the Justice Department and the President. And if you wait a month, it may very well be too dangerous.
I would suggest that we do a resolution this evening. It'll be a very simple resolution, expressing the thoughts that were just expressed by Ms. Buncock, and authorizing the, authorizing operation council and all the clerk to draft such a letter and have it be delegated to the federal authorities.
I think.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Now, can I have a motion to go back into our regular business meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Okay, now we're going to unfinished business. At this time, I would like the administration to address the questions that were raised at our June 17 meeting.
Thank you, Madam President, City Council. There was one open question that remained from the last meeting. That was, will the lights at the World Memorial be fully functional and repaired? As I said in that meeting, we had a contractor come out last week, and as of Friday night, all the lights are operational and repaired and working order tonight.
Thank you.
In addition to that, Mr. Manchella had one other item to follow up on.
Thank you, Council President. At our agenda-facing session, we had discussed a resolution or authorize settlement with regard to the matter with the Union County Improvement Authority. Unfortunately, unbeknownst to me, the lead counsel for the Union County Improvement Authority was away on vacation this whole week. Only today, we were able to begin hammering out the details of a proposed settlement. So unfortunately, that will be an item for the August meeting. And I would keep everyone apprised. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, can I have an update on the shared services with the Board of Education?
Yes, you can. Mr. Manchella and I have met, excuse me, with members of the Board of Education over the last month or so, and we have engaged in a very good dialogue and a litany of topics that we advanced to the first level of discussion. They're varied in nature, some that we believe with some effort can happen sooner than others, and then some are long-term and strategic that we need to put really some time to study the impacts of it. Certainly, we approached that looking at how is it mutually beneficial to not only them but to us as well to any agreement that would be put forth as a shared service. As of this moment, we're waiting for some responses and feedback from the administrators at the Board of that before we can proceed on the, what I would call low-line items that we might present to City Council.
Okay.
And as we move forward, we'll bring those items back before.
Thanks for the update. Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you please offer the NC 2013, the second reading, please?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to say to your audience, it's always a pleasure to see you here with us interested in how we can authenticate and interested in Plainfield. Hope we're doing a relatively good job for you. Under consideration of orders for passage of second reading, I call up a second reading of ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 10, morals and conduct, to add Article 12, outdoor smoking prohibited of city properties. And I request the clerk to produce affidavit of publication and at the same time read the ordinance by title.
The clerk's office prefers with the reading of the ordinance that Chairman Reed can further certify that this ordinance is published in the Star Legend and Curry News on January 2, 2013.
Thank you. Therefore, I move public hearing be held on the ordinance. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. The floor is open.
Well, it's me again, Dotte Guttmann, 414 Randolph Road. When I attended the meeting at which this initially was proposed, it sounded very different from what I just read in its fullness. The discussion at that time had to do with city parks, playgrounds, swimming pools, public recreation areas. It did not have to do with the sidewalks around municipal court, or around City Hall, or the City Hall parking lot. None of those things came up. There are an awful lot of sidewalks in this town that are city property. And I think that what has come out of the council's deliberations is a lot broader than what went into it. And I would most earnestly request, listen, I don't want people smoking in playgrounds either, or in library park, but I would most earnestly suggest that the council take this back to the drawing board and redefine it in the terms in which it was originally presented to the council at a meeting which I attended and listened to the presentation. I would really urge the council to do that. This is something I think that needs to be more carefully thought through before it's adopted, because I'm not sure that you meant to include all of the sidewalks on Park Avenue, West 8th Street, Arlington Avenue, and West 9th Street, all of which surround city property, or the sidewalks out in front of City Hall, or out in front of courthouse, or anything like that. Parks, swimming pools, playgrounds, absolutely. Inside buildings, absolutely. But I think that this has come out in a lot broader form than was initially presented and initially envisioned, and I would urge the council to send it back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Council President, if I may, thank. I just want to clarify a point. This ordinance does not regulate smoking on sidewalks.
Yes, of course.
It is specifically not included. And if you look at the definition of what is included, it is municipal buildings, parking lots, recreational facilities. It does not include sidewalks. It makes no mention whatsoever of sidewalks anywhere within the language of the ordinance.
Bernice Pagli, 1247th Street. I was interested to see that the enforcing entity will be the health officer or a code enforcement person. We don't have a health officer. We have a contract with Elizabeth to have health officer services, and so I seriously doubt they'll be out here looking around for people smoking. And the code enforcement, they would sort of have to show up by happenstance while doing their other duties, so I was just curious about the...
Council President, if I may respond. The language specifically says the health officer or his or her as being a law enforcement officer or a city code enforcement officer. So all three. So although we do not have a health officer in the city at all times, we do have health enforcement officials who could fill the same role.
Johnny Pritchard, 723 Orange and Avenue. Regarding Lieutenant Thomas Low, Plainfield Fire Department, we must honor the memory of one fine guy who did his best to protect us all from disaster and fire. A firefighter's job is dangerous enough. It's likely more dangerous than police officers sometimes. Let me, let me...
John, you're out of order. This is the hearing of the...
Oh, my apologies. Then I'll mention that later on. My apologies, ladies and gentlemen, council.
Hi, I'm Kathy Rogers from the Clinic Disease College in Middlesex in Union Counties. And I just wanted to speak to that enforcement issue. The Tobacco Free New Jersey has done a survey of the municipalities in New Jersey that have passed this ordinance, and enforcement has not been a problem. By and large, self-enforcing, because it's now on the books, it makes it easier for a person to say to another person, excuse me, there's no smoking allowed here, and they can work it out themselves. So it's not a huge enforcement issue. It doesn't come up that way. Thank you.
Seeing no other person to speak on this ordinance, I move at the hearing to be closed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Therefore, I move that the ordinance be adopted on the second reading and by passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be processed as required by law.
Madam Clerk, can I have a vote?
Yes. Oh, sorry, the second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can I have a vote?
Yes. Councilwoman Bree?
Yes.
Councilwoman Metz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
I think about four counts. I don't think we need it. On the sidewalk. The floor is now open for public comment, limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. Please be advised that a total time of thirty minutes have been allocated to permit members of the public to comment on resolutions and motions considered this evening. Each speaker will be permitted a maximum time limit of three minutes to comment. Members of the public may speak once during this setting of the meeting, appearing under resolutions or motions. The time allotted on each item is non cumulative. Extensions of three-minute, I'm sorry, an extension of three-minute time limit will be granted only after discretion of the City Council President or upon a majority vote of the members present.
Harold, you're searching for these because you know, Council Reed, I'm glad to be here to, the alternatives would not be very nice. Thank you, sir. I wish to request that four of the resolutions be taken on the consent agenda. I don't believe they belong on there because either the amount involved, or the fact that they all have to do with a dysfunction in the city administration and the tax collective office, and that's 264, 265, 266, and 268. I think it should be possibly approved officially.
Repeat those numbers, sir.
264, 265, 266, and 268.
Thank you.
I do want to speak about Resolution 273. I think I made my opinion on that resolution pretty obvious in my blog over the last few days, and if, and I'm not going to repeat it. This resolution is quite similar to one which was introduced earlier this year and then tabled for some reason, which I don't remember, but I think it's exactly the same resolution as originally introduced. So if it wasn't appropriate, then I do not see a resolution which will be binding on the next administration, the next Director of Public Safety, but it will be probably taking off within the next six months. I am not against the review and consultant going over the police division. Obviously, from the letter that I've communicated that it needs from Captain Soldiers, there are pretty many things that are necessary that need revision and bringing the division up to date. Obviously, some of the functions being done in the division go back to the 20th century. That sounds like a long time ago, but it was only thirteen years ago. And they have to be up to date. It has to be redone, but I believe this should be the province of the next Director of Public Safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Turner-Cavanagh, and I live at 935 Turnwood Avenue. I would like to urge you, please, to support Resolution 284, which is the request for county funds to stabilize what's being called the Lampkin House on Carroll Road. I was here last week when various members of the city council expressed concern that there needed to be public support to take over dealing with that house so that it does not become a burden on the taxpayers. I am personally willing to work on such an organization, and as soon as there's a 501(c)(3), I will put a thousand dollars into the treasury towards that house. I have talked to Dotte Pollard, who has promised every penny of the profit she made on the two books of Plainfield history to the project, and before we all get too excited, that's a total of $2,466, but it's every penny she made on the books of Plainfield history. I talked tonight to Reggie Thomas, who's a former member of the History Preservation Commission. He is an architect. He does live in a historic district, and he is willing to work on this organization. Bill Garrett, who has a lot of experience in local renovations, has agreed to work for the organization and to put up money. Maria Helen and Edgar Martinez have agreed to help and to put up money. So I hope you understand that until we have a 501(c)(3), we really can't accept money, but that we do have good people in the city of Plainfield willing to support the organization, and we do understand your concern, but we would like to get that house stabilized so that it doesn't suffer further damage. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Fuller, and I live at 981 Central Avenue. One of, I too want to speak on Resolution 284, the Lampkin Farmhouse. I understand the council's decision that you are not in favor of all make that historic structure, and I agree that that is a fiscally responsible decision. The plan to turn responsibility for the house over to a new, newly-to-be-formed nonprofit organization is a good idea. Plainfield residents understood the importance of historic preservation long before other communities or other states. Actually, a volunteer group saved the Drake House Museum from demolition in 1921. After the Second World War and the growth of the suburbs, people left cities, causing them to deteriorate. Familiar parts of our country's past were lost. Many people were fascinated when Jackie Kennedy moved into the White House in 1961 and began restoring it. Millions of people watched her on TV. A few years later, the Pennsylvania Railroad Station was demolished. The New York City Landmarks Preservation Law was passed in 1965 to slow demolition of other landmark properties in New York City. In the late 1960s, there was Plainfield vintage housing stock that was made, became available for sale. Our nation's 1976 bicentennial drew attention to history and our country's past. Many local towns established historical societies. By that time, Plainfield's Historical Society was 55 years old. The city has always been a mine for historic preservation. In 1979, the city council enacted the first historic preservation ordinance, and that led to establishment of the Historic Preservation Commission, the nine historic districts that we now have, and also the publishing of the design guidelines, which set the standards for restoration, which became the model for other historic preservation groups, both in and out of New Jersey. And another important thing we did with the Historic Preservation Commission was to establish local historic preservation status for sites and districts, and local designation is the first line of defense in restoring, in protecting historic property. This evening, I just want to talk about the many preservation enthusiasts in Plainfield who look at the Lampkin Farmhouse as Plainfield's next opportunity for historic preservation. We can't guarantee we're going to be successful, but we can use the strategies that have been successful so far. There are two kinds of grants, operating and capital. Those that offer capital are fewer than those that offer operating. The state has two programs, the New Jersey Historic Trust and the New Jersey Cultural Trust.
Council President?
Yes.
Would you like to request the extension of the...
Yes, please.
Yep.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
The Union County Grant Program is making a difference in Plainfield properties, too. This was the tax that voters enthusiastically supported about ten years ago, kind of a small tax, but it's the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund, and within that is the grant program that we're talking about for the farmhouse. Other money would be available through private and family donations. We'll have to go to private donors and ask them to support the project, and of course, there'll be a need for the nonprofit to have some fundraisers. Each of these grant programs requires a matching contribution, so the total cost of a capital project is made up of equal parts of a grant and matching funds from the organization. The historic preservation movement and the land conservation, open space movement have some common goals. Combined interest will benefit from new funding sources in the near distant future. This could be beneficial both to the Lampkin property and Plainfield's 30-acre water retention base, which is close to the Peterson Farm, which is already part of the Union County Open Space Program. Plainfield's historic preservation movement continues to contribute to the city's economy by bringing hundreds of people into the city each year, just as the July 4 parade and other celebrations do. House tours sponsored by one of the historic districts or other historic organizations attract people from the tri-state area to house tourism, garden tours. Homeowners hire carpenters, landscapers, and other tradesmen skilled in repairing and maintaining vintage structures. And local real estate offices assist many people who want to move to Plainfield. Thank you for listening about why historic preservation is so important to the city of Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ellyse Kenley, 937 Hillside Avenue. I am also the president of the Historical Society of Plainfield, and as Barbara Fuller mentioned, in 1921, a group of citizens came together to save the Drake House from demolition, and that group ultimately became the Historical Society of Plainfield, and have managed the house since that time. Now, in our case, the house was deeded to the city of Plainfield, so as we tell everyone who comes in, this is the house that belongs to the citizens. However, a group of volunteers over the period of ninety-some odd years have managed the house, and I just want to reiterate what Barbara said about people coming into Plainfield. Despite the fact that some people see the West End as, you know, that bad end of town, we have managed to recruit and invite over a thousand people into that house over a period of a year. We do tours for children. We do tours for children from South Plainfield, North Plainfield, and the Plainfield Public Schools. And it gives an opportunity for the city to showcase another aspect of this community. So on behalf of the board of trustees, I'm here to endorse the application for the grant from the Union County Preserve and Union County Fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also chair of the Historic Preservation Commission and I serve along this eleventh eleventh on the Historical Society Board. And I want to urge you to take this opportunity to bring further acclaim to Plainfield for historic preservation. You only get a chance like this once in a lifetime, maybe, and we should take it. I just want to let you know that it's not going to be a competition to the Drake House, but a complimentary draw. It just expands the opportunities for people to come to Plainfield to see history in real life. So I'm asking you to stop the demolition by neglect as a call and bring this house back to life. Thank you.
I know we're going to have some discussion on this, so should we have that discussion now or wait till the resolution comes up?
Then we'll let the president go and proceed and then when the resolution comes, we can discuss it.
Good evening. So my name is Eric Terrain. I'm also here in support of the Lampkin House. My company is the Terrain Group. I actually was recruited by Bill for the effort probably about a week ago. By way of background, my training was as an investment banker. In 2005, I started my own company, The Terrain Group. We're a development company, do a lot of 501(c)(3) work, and I'll be charged with establishing the 501(c)(3) here. I do have history in the city of Plainfield. Actually done two 501(c)(3) projects here since 2008. The African American Fund preschool on Seventh is one of my projects, as well as the Central Jersey Arts Charter School on 1225 South Avenue. That's also one of my projects. 1225 project actually was one that did not have a 501(c)(3) established before we got to it. The IRS typically gives you about a six to eight month window to actually receive your 501(c)(3) status on 1225 South Avenue. We actually got that done in 37 days. While I don't have the benefit of some of the history of the prior conversations from a, being a transaction guy, just from putting the deal together, which would be the 501(c)(3), the construction package, as well as the capitalization structure, that's actually what I do really all over the country on a daily basis. And so from the technical parts of this, quite frankly, I don't see a particularly large challenge. I think from the support that I'm seeing from some of the private donations that we're seeing, certainly, this will be a project where we would be syndicating historic tax credits. I think that from the technical aspects of it, I think that we can move very quickly and achieve a lot of things that the folks here want to achieve.
Can you step back?
Sure.
Usually let the back and forth go.
I have just one question for you. I recognize your name when you...
I recognize yours as well. I hope mine was in a good way. I hope you mean the same thing.
Were you responsible for putting together the Bonded for Black United Fund?
I was.
As for the Travis School?
I was.
For the holding board?
I was. Yeah, yeah, a lot of what I do is, so with the investment banking background, a lot of what I do is raise capital. I sort of backed into the development side of it, but that's correct.
Any more questions?
Since you're up here.
See, I was trying to get away before you came in.
You sound like you might know more about the financing than some of the historic preservation people. So this is, you know, looking at the background information that we've received, this is the estimated cost of this project overall is over a million dollars.
Right.
And that's in today's dollars. This is a long-term project. It's going to take a long time to raise those funds. So really, we're talking more than a million dollars. So, so far, and I'm really, and I'm really impressed with the local energy that's behind this. If you would add up the dollars that are going in upfront, it's way less than 1% of the total cost.
Sure.
And in a lot of these projects, the feasibility study is done, and when they go public with some kind of capital campaign, they've got 50% raised already. We're going to, we're talking about raising so far three or four, five thousand dollars towards a million dollars. So it's clear this project, especially when matching funds are required, is going to come back to the city and then is going to be competing with the Drake House for scarce matching funds that the city probably can't afford to give. So what other mechanisms? You mentioned tax credits. Could you explain how that would work in this project?
Absolutely. And stepping back for a moment and, but sort of relying on what the previous speaker said, and we're talking on the capital side of this, not the operating side, we're talking a million dollars, correct? Okay. So the way tax credits work, and as a matter of fact, 1225 South Avenue was actually also had federal tax credits in it. And so the way tax credit works, work in general, it can be particularly in low-income housing, but also for education or for historic projects. There's a tax credit given primarily used by C Corps. There's a less of a market, but you can also see it in S Corps and LLCs where, let's say you were, you were CEO of a company and you had a $100,000 tax liability. What you could do is go purchase $100,000 of tax credits to offset that liability. But it has a nice cyclical effect because then your $100,000 moves back into the community into a project. Your may hold by deferring the taxes, but we still get the benefit of your cash for the project. So in a historical tax credit project like this one, tax credits come on two levels, 20% or 10%. From everything I'm seeing, this would be a 20% project, but if even it were a 10% project, what we would do is we would go out and say, okay, we've got a million dollars worth of cost. We want to sell an appropriate amount of tax credits for that million. We would probably raise in between 400 and 500,000 from the syndication of the tax credits. So how I'm looking at the tax, the capitalization structure is, if it's a million dollar project, I know I can syndicate my tax credits and I can go get a half a million. If, if I, and again, I don't have the full benefit of history here, but I think my understanding is there's a 65,000 and another 65,000 grant that's in play now for 130. So if that's accurate, now my bogey is really only 350. And that's even, you know, before we start the project. So in terms of what I see every day, there's certainly a lot of work to do, but in terms of an insurmountable lift, I don't see that. And I've certainly not had a project have to come back to a city for funds and I don't anticipate that here.
So just one other question. Are these tax credits for historic projects?
They are.
Similar to like the low-income housing tax credits in that they're very competitive? You have to apply for them and compete against other proposals?
So it's two levels. So in the low-income housing tax credits, you have the 9% and the 4%. The 4% are non-competitive and analogous to the 20% and the 10% in the historic's. So anytime that we would talk about numbers, we would talk about the 10% because we could certainly get those, but then we would go compete for the 20. If we could get the 20, then these numbers get considerably better. But when you're dealing with these type of projects, you always want to deal with your workspace scenario.
Would the city be applying or would it be the nonprofit?
No, it would be the 501(c)(3) that would be applying.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a lot of what I do is try to take, we, the company in general focuses really on urban projects, trying to put capital where it isn't, but we really focus on bringing private capital into other projects and certainly keeping municipalities and the tax base out of it.
Sir, can you do this project without the city having to put in a matching 63,000?
Is that, is that matching 63,000 what's that issue now?
Well, that's what it says here, that the city would have to be matched, would have to match.
I think that someone, I think that someone else may would have to speak, who has a little more history, just in this sense. I understand that the property is in terrible condition right now and that this cash is actually meant as a stabilization. So as I understood it coming in, there would be funds to stabilize and at that point, I would come in and raise the additional capital. So that's my understanding as of now.
So what you're saying, that no matter what, the city would have to put up at least 63,000?
Well, I would say, I would, I would say that except I would use the word at most. Per my understanding, again, I'm not, I haven't spearheaded this project, but per my understanding, 63,000 is critical to get to the next step, but after that point, I wouldn't anticipate coming back to the city at all.
Okay, so, all right. Because that's the other part of my question. Do you foresee after that 63, where are we going? How much more are you going to come back and back and back?
I don't, I don't foresee coming back and inviting you to the ground.
Okay.
Thank you for all the time you've given us so far tonight. I did take your comments last week to heart. As you can see, we've had many discussions since, many people coming forward. I really appreciate Eric Terrain coming and providing some of the financial background to us. I think you can see there is support in the community for this project. I also hope that you can see that we believe that there is also, there are also mechanisms through which we can obtain the financial support. Everything Eric said in response to the questions that Counsel asked were correct. Councilwoman, I don't want to misleure you, that 63, I'd mind it be 65,000, is needed to stabilize. But if you recall, two years ago, Miguel Hunter, who was here speaking from the Historic Preservation Commission, she indicated that once it's stabilized, and I'll use the word mothball, it may not be 100% correct, but that term is also turned around a little bit, once it's stabilized, it can sift a little bit. We have time to move forward. As Mr. Terrain indicated, he actually obtained the last 501(c)(3) that he obtained in less than two months. We can move forward with the grant request now, get the match from the county, stabilize the structure within the next year, then start moving, I'm sorry, and as that work is being done, move forward with the 501(c)(3). Then the 501(c)(3) can actually make a next application either to the county or to the state. And I did also contact earlier in the week our congressional representatives. This project does fall within the Crossroads of the Revolution program of the federal government. And obviously, no congressman has said they have guaranteed you funds, but at the same time, they've indicated that the structure does qualify. We can go forward, submit the application through the 501(c)(3), not the city. And as Mr. Fuller mentioned, the end result here can be a jewel for the city, a 36-acre educational historic nature preserve that no other town, maybe, maybe now inside of Washington Reservation can, can claim something equal to it. But in Union County, this would be a unique resource and certainly something that is not readily available to all of the students in the city at this point in time. I strongly urge you to support this and I'm here to have any questions.
Yes. Mr. President?
Sure.
Would you be getting, or would the city be getting started with Mr. Terrain on the formation of a 501(c)(3) immediately?
As soon as the county...
And if not, why not?
Well, as soon as the county tells us we've received the grant, but there is no reason why we could not do it without them. We could, answer your question, yes, we can certainly do that.
Why would it be dependent on what the county says or doesn't say?
Councilman, as I'm thinking through, I hope you realize that my first thought was wait for the grant, but no, there's no reason to. There's no reason to wait for the grant at all.
If the grant were not to come through, would you abandon the effort? I would hope or think not.
I would think, I would agree with you, I would think not, because the county grant comes available every two years. The more that this structure is left in the state in which it's in, the more it's going to cost to stabilize it. So we would continue to request, we would not give up, but it's going to cost more money the longer you wait. If you recall, you know, two years ago, we asked for 90 and there was no end in sight. Now there's 65 and the end is in sight. I thank you.
Am I allowed to speak again?
No.
Charles Welker from 950 Fernwood Avenue, and I support the city spending the money to shore up and mothball the property.
Thank you. Any more? Seeing that, can I have a motion to close? All those in favor? Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
Madam President? If I may be quick to see, and I believe you're going to go into the consent agenda? If I may. I would like to request of the council to table Resolution 278-13. The primary reason is we were, my department was unable to schedule and confirm a firm schedule of the cooperative pricing that would be essential for us to move this project forward, so requesting to table it at this time. That's my first of two requests.
So we can get to it with the table, yeah?
Thank you. Just want to put the council on those. And my second is to request of the body to remove Resolution 270-13 from the consent agenda to a voting item. And when we get to it, I can give discussion after the council's request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you now want a consent agenda?
On that basis, we're going to ask for consent to be routine, non-construalist by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council, local, or citizens' request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the new business and is no receipt until it's laid on the agenda.
Thank you. It's a little confusing, but here I go. I offer those resolutions listed on this key consent agenda, which are identified as R. 240-13 through 248. Then I move to 267, we'll be on there. 269, and we move 270. And then I start at 271, 272, then 274 through 276, 282 through 283, and 285 through 287. Is that correct, Mr. Clinton?
I had 240 to 248. I also had...
264, 265, 266, we're removing completely?
Yes.
270, we have been requested to table?
Yes.
So 267 will remain on there, correct?
Yes.
269, and 271 and 272. And then a bouncer is enlisted.
Yes.
Okay, I offer these as a motion and move adoption.
Second. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
Okay, and then we will deal with the...
I think the wrong call on this consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Met?
Yes.
Councilwoman Swartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we can do so for the remaining provisions.
Okay, here I go. I hereby introduce Resolution 249-13, authorizing renewal of the Perlo Vietto Cooperation License to Seer liquor.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution 250-13, authorizing renewal of the Marie Group trading as Jay Marie and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
I hereby offer Resolution 251, authorizing renewal of the Adreno Terry's Liquors trading as San Hallmark Liquors and move for its adoption. authorizing renewal of the Adreno Terries Liquors Trading as San Hallmark Liquors, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby offer Resolution two five two dash fifteen, granting the advising consent to the appointment of Diane Cherry Bono to serve as treasurer for the City of Plainfield, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby offer Resolution two five three dash fifteen, authorizing professional service contract to the Racy and Racy in the amount not exceed five thousand dollars, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby offer Resolution two fifty-four dash fifteen, authorizing a professional service contract to the Marion R. Rubin in an amount not exceed five thousand dollars, and move for its adoption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby offer two fifty-five dash fifteen, authorizing professional service contract to the Donald Scott Foster in the amount not exceed five thousand dollars, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby offer Resolution two five six dash fifteen, authorizing a professional service contract with the Giri, Canitar, Esquire in the amount not exceed five thousand dollars, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution two five seven dash fifteen, authorizing a professional service contract to the Eric Bernstein and Associates LLC in the amount not exceed five thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Council, I hereby introduce Resolution two five eight dash fifteen, authorizing additional appropriation in the amount of fifteen thousand to the Runeman and Britain of Professional Service, and I move for its adoption as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution two five nine dash fifteen, authorizing the Menzer and Menzer to serve as special counsel to provide legal representation, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution two six oh dash fifteen, authorizing the mayor to enter into a held, shared service partnership that we met with the Union County Local Information Network, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby offer Resolution... Sorry, folks. I hereby introduce Resolution R. two sixty-one dash fifteen, authorizing the mayor and municipal clerk to execute an agreement with the county union to modify the inter-local service agreement, and move for its adoption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution R. two sixty-two dash fifteen, authorizing the purchase of emergency generation services through an online auction series, and move for its adoption.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I recommend a motion to amend. We now had the auction to provide the lowest bidder, and Mr. Restano is available to explain the results of that bid.
Is that the new resolution that was passed out tonight, or the resolution, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Restano.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, and I appreciate your indulgence. Last Friday, the online auction was held by, run by EMEX. The results have been presented to you in the revised resolution, which indicates the, the results for both the city-owned buildings and for the street lighting that the city is responsible for as well. The anticipated savings during the course of this contract is estimated, and again, we don't know all the particulars on what we're going to spend, but based upon prior year's spending, prior year's spending, the cost we paid previously per kilowatt hour and the current rate, we should be saving about sixty thousand dollars through this process.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My concern about this is that the way it was presented last week, there was no indication that you would allow for an option prior to the adoption of the resolution, which was presented to us on the agenda session last week, seek an approval to go out to auction. And so, the approval hasn't been given for the Council to go out to do an auction. I think it's a good thing, because the city saves money, but I don't think that it was properly communicated to us last week in terms of the process. But I'm not going to get hung up on process, because at the end of the day, savings are savings. I think what should be presented to this government body, now that this resolution is being presented in this form, is an analysis of what those savings look like, what the cost would be if we continued to use the utility company as a provider of the, of the commodity versus a new provider. And I think we should have had an analysis with all of the accounts that are involved, what it has cost us, and what we will save when comparing the results of the option. That's what I-
And I can take responsibility for that. Obviously, I wasn't here last Monday. I did have a personal obligation, but the, I can provide Council with the current utility costs. We anticipated being about seven and a quarter percent savings on the government buildings, and a very close percentage as well on the, on the street lighting, but I can provide that. The intent of bringing it to you last week was just to let you know, the Council, that in order for us to take advantage of this, we had to have the auction as close to the actual date of approval as, as possible. Because of procurement regulations, we couldn't have the auction on a Monday prior to a council meeting, so it had, it had to be held last Friday. I do appreciate and respect your comments. Obviously, we are looking at ways to save money any way, any way possible.
I have a question. We will continue to have the power lines feed us all electric, and we will not pay public service, but pay these companies?
There, there will be absolutely no change. In fact, the, the way it essentially works is we will still be getting a bill from PSE and G. It'll just list this third-party energy provider on the bill, and we will be paying in that, in that fashion. So, we're not, it's really, from a, from an administrative standpoint, there's no difference with no additional administrative burden placed on the city whatsoever.
In other words, public services send us a bill?
Yep.
And instead of paying public service, we would make the check out for this company in one bid?
Yep.
It seems strange, however, that public service can't just, why didn't they do it? They're doing it now. Why don't public services lower their rates?
You know, it's almost, it's, it's almost like a monopoly, and this is a way deregulation has addressed that. It's allowed municipalities, it's allowed, allowed individuals to seek alternative methods of energy provision. The poles are the same, the wires are the same, there's nothing that's going to change from the city's perspective.
It seems strange to me that we can get electric much cheaper. Can you say sixty thousand dollars a year? Is that too-
I, I anticipate that over the two-year period, it's going to be about sixty thousand dollars.
So, we say thirty thousand a year?
Approximately thirty thousand a year. Based upon current, current or, you know, past usage, or electrical usage.
Thank you. I introduce it.
Council President, I need a second on that motion, so I'm gonna-
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Just a comment. When, when one of our cabinet members or senior officials cannot be at the meeting, they still should be able to provide information to somebody that could answer the Council's questions. And we have these meetings, and this, this has gone on for a long time, where people, the people who are present at the meeting often don't have the information, and the answer is, we'll get back to you. And I just wish that we could fix this. You know, I, I don't know where a city administrator is tonight. Maybe he's got a good reason. We haven't seen much of him lately. But even if he's not here, that's no excuse not to have the information, especially at the agenda fixing, when, when we're trying to sort through the resolutions. So, that's not a question, I don't need a response right now, because whatever the response is, it doesn't matter. What matters is fixing.
Thank you, Mr. Sledge. I agree, and I'm sure that the next year, we have a different scenario. I hereby offer Resolution R. two sixty-three dash thirteen, which is awarding a contract to the-
I'm sorry, Jay Marie, we have to-
Vote? I thought you voted. Oh, as amended. I offer Resolution two sixty-two dash thirteen as amended for adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
May I proceed to Resolution R. two sixty-three dash thirteen, awarding a contract to the First Credit Municipal Collection Service, and move for its adoption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I oppose.
Can I get a vote, please?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Met?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sledge?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
No.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Okay, I move to Resolution-
Two sixty- She has been adopted.
After a long pause. Well, I think the administration agreed with me. They ought to provide me with information as we go along, probably every quarter. Should be good on how many tickets we do collect. And, and also, and also provide any cost that's associated to the city. As I understand it, no cost will flow to the city.
There'll be an additional seven, under this contract, there'll be an additional seventeen percent added to each bill of collection. The city will pay nothing for these services.
And they have paid nothing for the company to seek out and make telephone calls and send their letters and all of that to the people they're trying to collect from.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a moment?
Yes, please.
Okay. Resolution R. two sixty-four dash thirteen, which was removed from the consent agenda, authorizing a refund of overpayment taxes in the amount of sixty-eight thousand nine eighty-seven twenty-nine on thirty-two properties as per tax schedule.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Resolution two sixty-five, I guess. And that's a resolution to refund subsequent charges paid by outside lien holders in error on taxes billed in the twelve to twelve thirteen dash thirty-three South Avenue in the amount of forty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and ten cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, I offer Resolution two sixty-six dash thirteen to refund subsequent charge paid by an outside lien holder in error on taxes billed to twelve forty-seven dash seventy-one South Avenue in the amount of seventy-six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second. Could you say that?
Seventy-six hundred, seventy-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-seven.
Sixty-six dash thirteen?
No, nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand.
Is that two sixty-six dash thirteen?
Yes.
Oh, to me, I see, I'm reading the first word as, it's nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and eighteen cents. The first word is-
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, I go to, let me take this one. Resolution two sixty-seven.
Two sixty-eight.
Two sixty-eight. Two sixty-seven was on the Penn State agenda? Okay. So, Resolution two sixty-eight. No, Doc, you guys are all confused up here, but I guess you're right. Offer two sixty-eight dash thirteen is a resolution to cancel twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen real estate tax, real estate and special improvement district taxes by Sid, billed to tax-exempt properties. And there is a listing of twelve forty-seven dash seventy-one South Avenue in the amount of twelve thousand five forty-nine thirty-eight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's not all of it. We have several here, if I may read them. Twelve forty-seven dash seventy-one South Avenue. For twenty-twelve was twelve thousand five forty-nine thirteen. For twenty-thirteen was sixty-two seventy-four sixty-nine. Twelve thirteen dash thirty-three South Avenue. Twenty-twelve was twenty-nine thousand four sixty-eight sixty-two. Twenty-thirteen is fourteen thousand seven thirty-four thirteen. And one thousand and seven dash eleven Park Avenue was eleven thousand oh twenty-nine seventy-three. Twenty-thirteen was five thousand five hundred and fourteen eighty-six. That's the total resolution. I make a motion for adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, I guess I go to which one, two sixty-nine?
Two seventy. We have-
Two seventy was offered as a, a motion to-
Table.
Table.
No, two seventy, I apologize, was offered as a resolution to come off the consent agenda to a voting item, is how I asked the question. And two seventy-eight was asked to be tabled. Two seventy-eight to be tabled, and two seventy dash thirteen to come off the consent to be voted on, please.
We have a second before we discuss.
Yeah.
Okay. I offer Resolution two seven oh dash thirteen, for which I don't have a copy here. And move for its adoption.
I, I second, and I wanted to make a comment about this. I, I, I saw that there was a communication from the administration dated last Thursday expressing a concern about what the action that we took at the agenda fixing. But we, I don't know about the other council members, even though this is dated Thursday, I didn't get this until just now. So, I, I'm just thinking that we should approve this. And if there, if there is a problem, bring it back in August. Does the administration see a problem in bringing this back in August for this one item?
Yes, the administration does. Based on what the Council asked me to do at the agenda fixing session was to quote-unquote, see if additional funds could be found somewhere else in the operating budget, I asked staff to do just that, and to reach out to the city's auditor, Mr. Swisher, to qualify if want that could be done, to which you do have a copy of his written response that he provided. Once we received that response, we did additional due diligence, even through as latest today, is why you're receiving that now. And we offered that, it is our opinion, based on the auditor's representation as well, if we do not put the revenue back into the Chapter one fifty-nine assertion of special items of revenue, it would in fact cause the administration to immediately call a layoff to go into effect that we would have to move immediately for the two individual impact- that we would have to move immediately for the two individuals impacted by that change in the operating budget.
I'm sorry, it also says that this is not allowable and illegal to do so?
That is what Mr. Swisher offered to, as his response, yes.
I have a question. Sorry, we don't want to do anything illegal here.
Certainly, that's why I offered the response that, to the councilman, that if we did not move accordingly, it would in fact cause the administration to move into an immediate layoff position where we would have to be in that process immediately and give a forty-five day notice to the two persons impacted.
So when we, when we expend our police overtime halfway through the year and then have to transfer funds in like to the tune of five or seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm just like thinking, why can't we do the same thing for a much, much smaller amount?
It was my fault as well. That's why we went to what I deemed to be the person who should ask that question. And the response is that, which he offered, which I will offer my interpretation of, I did go seeking that information and the response is before you. And I hear, I hear your question, but the way I can respond is you have our auditor's written response to how he answered your question.
Councilman Storch? Yes, I want to hear. And the reason why it's okay to do it as far as police or any department is concerned, where we've agreed to X number of dollars in overtime and X number of dollars in regular salary, is that salary and wages, that's considered one. And so whether you break it down by overtime and regular, it doesn't matter. What you have is a part of two million dollars. You're allowed to spend that regardless of whether you call overtime or regular salary and wages. And that's not the case that we're dealing with here. We said we don't have the money in the budget. The administration didn't provide in the budget to fund these two positions. And there are consequences as a result of the administration not doing what it should have done. And that is to provide in the budget for these two particular positions. And the fact that it did not, now it has to deal with the, you know, consequences of not putting money in the budget to fund those two positions. And so I would recommend that we move forward and adopt this resolution as we have it before us because the administration went back, they confirmed with the auditor who supported the position that we took. And so I think we should move forward and adopt the resolution as presented. Let the administration come back next month with how it plans to deal with those two positions.
Yes, I do have the resolution, and the resident is Chapter 159 Resolution requesting approval to amend the twenty-thirteen municipal budget by inserting items of revenue and appropriations in accordance with the NJS forty-eight, colon, four, dash, eight, seven. The total amount is nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, nine hundred, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents, which is grand.
Yeah, we already seconded this, Councilman Reed.
I understand, but I did not introduce a resolution with the amounts and stuff. That's why I'm going to-
I understand, but we already seconded, so the motion that we moved to second. Right now, what we're doing is, because what we're doing is we're discussing it. You can't discuss a resolution without seconding it.
I understand.
Right now, we're discussing the resolution.
Okay, go ahead, do what you want to do. I was just clarifying for the public what we were doing.
I think the public have a copy of it. What you're saying is that, I mean, what the auditor is saying is that it's illegal for us to, let me just get this right. Because I don't want to do anything illegal. Explain to me.
Absolutely, Council President. Basically, if, if this UEZ money is not part of this resolution right now, we would in essence be over-expending that salary line in that particular, in the economic development office. We cannot do that with the hopes that there will be a transfer in November, that that is unlawful as stated by the order. Therefore, our only lawful option, if not introduced as part of this resolution, would be to begin the process of a layoff, which would have various steps. So ba- based on the, I know the, the request of Councilman Storch that we find the funds elsewhere in the budget, we are unable to do that and we all, and would have to go to a layoff plan.
Can I make a comment?
I think that, just to concur with what Councilman Matt said, the budget, the city is well aware of what the budget should have been and it's incumbent on the city to provide a budget. It's not incumbent upon us to use UEZ funds, which is a finite amount of money, to fund salaries. So the administration had plenty of time. We had only passed a budget in June. So the way that I feel is we need to go forward and follow the resolution that we have.
If I may, just for a point of clarity, because I don't want anyone else who does not know that historically, at least the last dozen years, the way that these positions have been funded has been through the UEZ dollars and not through the operating. So it was not a change of direction for the last budget that was approved. There's been a consistency of how that's been done over the last dozen budgets, as I've been told. So it hasn't been a change or a shift in direction.
And I, I think that's, that's recognized. It was documented, yeah, I mean, just for clarification, but I think the situation we're in now is that we do need to change because we no longer get any new revenues through the sales tax. The UEZ program is essentially over. And all we have left is this one pot of money that as we spend it down, it just disappears. So if the intention, our intention, this is a policy decision that the council has to make. If our intention is to spend it down on things that we will never see any benefit from in the future, then we can make that choice. Or we can make the choice of keeping that money and putting it into lasting improvements like streetscape improvements and/or a revolving loan fund, which has been prioritized by the administration. These are all like investments that will have a return on investment. Putting, spending it on admin, I don't think it's having any return on investment right now. So I strongly urge my colleagues to support this resolution the way it stands tonight.
Resolution has to stand. Roll call on Resolution two seven dash one three. Councilman Reeves?
I understand.
Mark two seven, that's- Two seven zero, two seven zero one three. Councilman Reeves, that's things. Councilman Matt?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes. I have, if I'm in favor, one of saying, resolution has been adopted.
Thank you. I introduce Resolution R two seven one dash thirteen, authorizing a family workers summer program agreement with the state of New Jersey Department of Human Services Division of Family Development and move for its adoption.
We already did two seventy, that's agreed. That wasn't even sent.
Yeah, that's- One, two seventy six, by the way.
Two seventy three?
Seven three.
Seven three.
Two seventy.
Okay, two seven three. I hereby introduce Resolution two seven three dash thirteen, authorizing approval to enter into a professional service contract for hostels and consultant services with the Roger Group LLC for the Plainfield Division to obtain certification as a fully accredited law enforcement agency in the amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and move for its adoption.
Second, second comment, second comment. I've heard a lot of commentary about this particular item and I, I do read the blogs. And I think there's some very good issues raised about this particular resolution and whether or not we should be doing this at this time. And I do have my concerns that we ought to take pause on this and give us some more time to really look at what is being offered here by way of the certification that you proposed, to see if it is something that you really want to do at this time, to see if the investment is worth it. I don't think that we should move forward with this at this time. And I really would like to make a motion, but I'm not going to make it as of yet to table it because my colleagues may want to add additional comments.
I have a question for the administration. Are there exigent circumstances that would, is there a reason why we need to pass this like right now rather than in three months, six months?
I don't believe there are extenuating circumstances that would request that we do it now. I know Director Helwig has been asking and presenting this to the council as something that he deemed that the administration supports, that is really a good thing to have, to support our police department, but not in it, that it has to be done tonight or we lose the consequence of something.
Commander President, I understand that the JIF, if you will, recommend that we do this and we would save a certain amount of money for a year. I forget how much it was, do you recall?
I believe the number was somewhere approximately five percent.
Five percent of what? Of the police budget?
Five percent of our yearly premium. I just want to make sure was that the individual, five percent of our yearly premiums under the JIF.
Okay, and that amount should equal about how much, thank you.
Our JIF numbers, they fluctuate from year to year. Unfortunately, they don't have the exact numbers for you this evening, but I can certainly get them today.
Okay, and if we delayed this, are we still open for adopting it, say in August, September, or whenever?
It would be at the will and discretion of the council. And then those opportunities to create savings would exist at the time if approved then by the governing body.
Also, as a procedural matter, if in fact it is tabled this evening, it is for the council and then bring it back as an item. It would not come back from the administration.
So the motion that the council is making?
Well, just one additional comment before we vote. I am not convinced that we need this certification to bring the kinds of changes and transformation within the department that may be needed and that we can receive those same insurance benefits if we get the kinds of changes and improvements in policies and procedures without necessarily having to go through an accreditation process. I may be wrong, but I think we should give ourselves some more time to really think this through, look at it very carefully, rather than moving forward at this time. And so for both reasons, I would-
Before you, can I just make a comment before you? I mean, I support the motion that you're about to make. I think we should consider accreditation, but I don't think the timing is good for this. We're about to have, we're about to see a new administration. After November, we will know who that administration is. But we all, what we do know, it's not going to be the current administration, it's not going to be the current mayor. So a decision like this really is, is going to have like a lasting impact and it's a big investment. It may be worth it, but I think it really makes sense for the incoming administration to sit down with the current advocates and talk it through and make, and then come back with a recommendation on this. So I, I do support the length of this, but, but still keeping it on the table for discussion for the future.
So I move that be tabled, Resolution two seventy-three dash thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, can I roll call, do roll call? Okay, this is a roll call on Resolution R two seventy-three dash one three. To table it, I'm sorry. Councilman Reeves?
Yes.
Councilman Matt?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Resolution R two seventy-three dash one three has been tabled.
Thank you. I hereby introduce Resolution R two seventy-seven, if I'm correct. Two seventy-seven dash thirteen, authorizing a professional sex contract to Remington Vernick Engineers for Park Avenue ramp design in the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby offer Resolution R two seventy-eight dash thirteen, which is authorizing a contract basis-
Yes.
As that Resolution R two seventy be tabled.
We have to, we have to, we have to, we have to second it first.
Okay, I introduce Resolution R two seventy-eight dash thirteen to be tabled as per request from the administration.
Second.
That is a roll call. Councilman Reeves, this is a resolution to table, two seventy-eight dash one three. Councilman Reeves?
Yes.
Councilman Matt?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-eight dash one three has been tabled.
Now I hereby introduce Resolution R two seventy-nine dash thirteen, authorizing an interlocal agreement between the County of Union and the City of Plainfield for the resurfacing of Plainfield Avenue and move for its adoption.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution two eight oh dash thirteen, approving qualified vendors and service providers for engineering service for land use board and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any, any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution R two eighty-one dash thirteen, authorizing a professional service contract to Daryl Noah as engineering consultant to the Division of Planning, Board, and Board of Adjustments and Historic Preservation Commission in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I move to Resolution two eighty-four dash thirteen, authorizing the submission of a grant application to Union County for stabilization of the Landford House in the amount of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and move for its adoption.
Second, the comments.
Yes, sir.
I'm very glad to see that the administration and the proponents of this project came out and forced and brought a financial professional to present some of the options that may be available in terms of financing for this project. It is also good to see that both the Historical Society and the HBC, some of the members of those two organizations came out and spoke in support of this. I intended, as was made by some of my comments earlier in the week, to support this resolution and I will. My concern was about the project's ability to sustain itself beyond this application process. And I think based on some of what we've heard this evening, there is all indication that this will be able to sustain itself as long as the five oh one C three is formed and the project gets up and running. And so I look forward to seeing this become a reality one day in an not too distant future. And I have my support received.
I have a comment there.
Let's start.
I mean, the last time this came before us, I was one of the people that said I didn't think the city could afford this and I didn't see private dollars behind it and public support. So tonight I see that we've made a lot of, I mean, we've made some progress and I want to give credit to the advocates. And this is, this is one of those things that I want to support. And this is, this is one of those things that, that I want to support as much as I want to support anything because there is, it is, it is a potential asset for the city, and it's a, it's a scarce asset that could, that could actually be made into something valuable in the future. But, you know, that $1 million project having, what I'm hearing, $2,400 behind it at the moment, we have to figure out a way to get from there to something like much more substantial. So tax credits, it sounds like a good idea. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I haven't heard anything that makes me confident that, you know, there's certainly no guarantee about tax credits, but should the city put $63,000 in to stabilize the property and then hopefully make this work? It's a gamble, but it seems to me, and I'm a bit of one about this, but it seems like a gamble worth taking, but unless we do something significant in terms of private support, it is going to come back to the city. Let's be honest about this. We heard somebody at the mic say or imply that this is not going to come back for more funds. It's coming back, let's face it. So can we be creative about how the city could contribute rather than just give, just give dollars? And maybe this is a question for Mr. Mierstaff, because there's some creative use of abandoned properties in, as a trade to get this thing going. Is it, is it possible that we could actually come up with another one or two abandoned properties that this, that this property owner or whoever we're bargaining with would actually pay cash for? And then we could put those funds into a dedicated fund towards, as a matching fund for future grants towards this? And that, you know, the city would come out ahead too, because then we'd have this developer, if they're willing, they would be putting properties back on the tax roll, you know, singing, you know, abandoned residential properties. So I just think we, you know, we were being creative, but I think we need to be more creative. And I'm just wondering if there's a possibility that, that we could do something like that. There was a nod over there. Could you just say something about that?
If, if you would, I was certainly asked that Bill take all that you said under consideration and plan to prepare something that we can bring back that's tangible to the council.
If we could get some cash to put into a dedicated fund so that when, when the advocates come back for another match, because they're coming, then we have something that's already set aside, so.
Just one additional comment. I have to disagree with my colleague. I think that we should be supportive as we can of this resolution this evening, but there should be no expectation that there will be funding for this going forward. There are too many competing priorities that the city has. And so, this project has my 100% support in terms of it getting off the ground, getting this resolution adopted so that the application can be made to the county to get the $63,000. We will put in our matching $63,000. But there should be no expectation that it will be an ongoing string of funds coming from the city to sustain this project moving forward. And I think that should be made very clear. I think that the proponents of this project understand that, and it is represented very well by Mr. Correto, that that wouldn't be necessary. And so, I suspect that we are on the same page.
Madam President, just one comment. Yes, please.
Just one comment. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Matt. I am certainly giving my vote this evening, but I am not giving it with the intention that you're coming down for a moment. Thanks so much.
It's my understanding that this resolution authorize us to apply to Union County the $63,750, which we will have to match. And that in the future, and this will stabilize, and you got a lot of stabilization from what I see up there. And then the next step will be to form a 501(c)(3). Why can't we form a 501(c)(3) now before we apply for the funds? And if I understood you, Bill, correctly, we have to apply for the funds and then do it? It's really confusing, but I agree with my colleagues. This is an application, and we will honor the request to apply to Union County for the funds, and while you apply to Union County, maybe they can supply some of the additional money we need too. So I move for its adoption.
We have more comments?
You have more comments?
Yes. Who's that? Ms. Williams? No, Ms. Williams.
I think that this is an important project, and I think that when you think about the future of our city and where we'll be in several years, I think that, you know, having this house and the other house, the Drake House, look at it as two sides of our city with our city in the middle, I think it's important. In, you know, just a few years, we'll be coming up on the centennial of the historical society. So I think that, you know, it's incumbent upon everyone to support this project, and for all of us who do care about history, it is important to support this project. And I think that the additional capital that we want really is human capital. We saw some of it tonight, but I think that, you know, given the folks who came up and their expertise and the people that they know, I think that there will be a lot more dollars behind a project like this. And my last comment is, you know, when we think about what we spend money on and what really has value, I think we can't discount, you know, items like this which don't, you know, necessarily provide immediate tax relief, you know, or other sort of concrete tangible things that we see. I think we really do need to keep an eye on the future and an eye on history, you know, what really is important. And just my last part of my comment is that even though I still haven't received any of the information that I've been requesting for a few weeks now, I know that this money, you know, the amount of money that the current administration spends on cake and food, tens of thousands of dollars, would certainly pay a pain to stabilize this structure. Thank you.
Excuse me. We are supporting this project in the tune of $63,750.
That more on food this year?
I do not expect to, to put any more money into it. And this will be taxpayers' money. It's not one person's, you know, we can go out and fundraise, do whatever else we need to do to make this project work, but we are definitely, as for me, for my vote, you will not be getting another vote for any, another dime. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by me, and I think it's been seconded by...
Yeah, that's correct.
Mr. Matt?
All those, can I roll call, please?
Yes. Roll call vote on Resolution R284-13. Councilman Graves?
Yes.
Councilman Met?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Happily, yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Resolution has been added.
Thank you. Madam President, I have a new item. I offer the accompanying resolution identified as R288-13, which authorizes renewal of a certain social fund license for 2013-2014 license term, commonly known as plant cosmos, trading is plant cosmos, which was not set forth in the agenda fixing session of July 8, 2013 to be added to the agenda for consideration.
Is your part of my vote? I'll go with the second.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go.
Is your part of my vote?
Councilman Graves?
Yes.
Councilman Met?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Is Resolution 288-13 has been added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, will you offer set, offer set, let's move.
Yes, I hereby introduce Resolution R288-13, which was a new item just added to the agenda and move for its adoption.
Second.
Can I roll call?
Councilman Graves?
Yes.
Councilman Met?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Thank you, yes.
Resolution R288-13 has been adopted.
We now have come to ordinance on first reading. Mr. Chairman, would you please offer MC 2013-06 for first reading?
Madam President, under introduction of ordinances on first reading, I introduce the accompanying ordinance identified as MC 2013-6, which is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Section 3, President of the Council, Section 4, Duties of the President of the Council, Section 9, Regular Meeting, Section 11, Agenda, Section 12, Form, Adjournment, Section 13, Voting, and Section 15, Order of Business of the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971, and request the title be read.
The clerk's office concurs with the reading of the ordinance.
I move the ordinance to be adopted on first reading. If adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Department of the Council in the chambers located at 325 Watchon Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, on Monday, August 19, 2013, at 8:00 p.m. or sooner after as the matter can be heard. I need a second.
Second.
And...
Comments from the council?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend a motion to amend. This ordinance takes into account all of the suggestions that were made by the council, however, one was omitted, and that would be in Section 2, 2-3. It states, "In the absence of the President of the Council, the Council shall appoint an interim president by majority vote, who shall only serve for the duration of the meeting." Councilman Matt rightly pointed out that it should also state after that or until the President of the Council arrives, which is normally our practice.
Right.
So I ask that a, a motion to amend be, be made, which would include the language that I just read.
So move. Second.
Can I roll call?
This is a roll call vote for a motion to amend, MC 2013-6. Councilman Reeves?
Yes.
Councilman Met?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Okay, and then I have to offer it for adoption, correct? As amended?
Yes.
Therefore, I offer it as adoption as amended. I need a second, I guess.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Reeves?
Yes.
Councilman Met?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
The ordinance in 2013-6 as amended has been adopted.
Thank you.
On first reading.
Thank you.
Madam President, you have...
We now have come to the general public comments section of tonight. Any resident or taxpayer of Plainfield who's walking to the panel, any governmental item of concern to them during, during the general public comments section of the council? Citizens must clearly state their name and address as per. Once the speaker is gratified by the presiding officer to speak, a total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Large groups are urged to select a spokesperson to represent them. Each person is allocated 5 minutes to speak. The presiding officer or a majority of on the council may extend the length of time allocated militarily or individually. It is not a question and answer period. Neither the presiding officer nor council members will engage in a back and forth exchange, so speakers are encouraged to present all their views. The presiding officer as well as any council member may respond to any comment after such speaker has finished. The presiding officer may refer the speaker to the city administrator, the city administrator, or an appropriate department head, and any council member may choose to respond in writing to individual citizen.
Okay. Third and last time. I think we've got more to be read by the road. First, thank you very much for acting so quickly on my request for a speedy resolution to go to the Department of Justice in the Jaylon Martin case. I appreciate that very much, and I think all of Plainfield, though, I personally feel absolutely outraged by the verdict. Secondly, I want to congratulate you on the Lincoln House grant. I think that is an important part of the history of this city, and as Councilwoman Williams said, it's from end to end, and the rest of us are on the same page. Furthermore, I want to point out to you with respect to Resolution 262-13, that in our household, we've kept using an alternative electricity provider for several years now. And while the bill still comes through PSE and G, the electricity was itemized, and PSG always very conveniently points out how much more it would have been had it come through PSE and G. I believe that the city will wind up saving money, and furthermore, that when the bills come in, y'all will know how much you're saving. And fourth and last, with respect to R281-13, I know that at my age, time goes by a lot faster than it used to, but it doesn't seem to me that the time period of January 1, 2013, through December 31, 2013, is in fact 18 months. But that's what this says. For the 18-month time period of January 1, 2013, through December 31, 2013. On my calendar, that's 12 months.
On mine, too.
I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Is that a typo?
Is, or is it a 12-month contract and it is a typo? That we attempted to make clarification on from the agenda fixing session. We changed the calendar date and not the verdict. Our apologies.
Thank you very much for clarifying it. I thought I was getting older than that.
No, not...
I'm taller than I am. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
And in response to that, I think the actual resolution is correct. That is correct.
Johnny Precious, over to the audience there in Plainfield. Three things I'd like to go over with you, members of the council. First, regarding Lieutenant Thomas Low, Plainfield Fire Department. I think it's best that we honor the memory of a good firefighter, a good officer of Plainfield, F.B., who served us well in any kind of weather, night and day. When an alarm rang, he slipped that pole and hopped that tailbone over the fire, not knowing what, what dangers or hazards he might encounter on route or at the scene of the fire. He protected us day and night. Firefighting is one of, one of the most dangerous occupations in this country today. Let's not forget the fact that in New York, 343 New York City firefighters were killed on September 11 in Oakland, and that the massive attack in New York City on the World Trade Center. Lord did serve us well. I don't know whether he served in the military service before he became a firefighter, but I certainly hope to find out. And if he did, that would be fine too, because he served our country well, he served our city well. And, and I certainly hope to find out about his previous military service of any, and I certainly hope that there is. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate the EPW for repairing all those lights at the War Memorial, Memorial thing. The lights that were fixed, that, that shines a light on the names of those who served our country, those who died and served for our country in every war, that includes Vietnam. And in honor of those who died in Vietnam, with that permission, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to sing. They loved us so. Every day in a hundred words, they told us so. In honesty, in affection, they told... they told us so. They loved us so. Every day, a hundred ways, they showed us so. With loyalty and bravery, they showed us so. They were defenders, and they kept us through. They familiar with the darkness and fought for liberty. They loved us so. And we should know for we love them so. And lastly, we need to react to the Milneburg. We're thirty miles away from being dead center because New York is still a terrorist target. Despite the denials of some people that we're not, and what we still are, we're against terrorism. And we need to react to Milneburg. New Brunswick has two hospitals within its city limits. Why not Plainfield have a hospital its own? That means we need to react to Milneburg. And I'm not talking about head colds or earaches. I'm talking about many people's lives. And are we gonna, are we gonna get up on Milneburg? Oh, no, 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 no. We're not gonna do that. We're not gonna do that at all because we need a hospital that is capable of mission. We need a hospital that can serve this city and save many people's lives. And I said, "But, ladies and gentlemen, council, the sooner we act on Milneburg, the better off we all will be." Don't make myself clear.
Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, my name is Alex Tolliver. I live at one, two, three, Sumner Avenue, Plainfield. I don't have a question. Yes, I do have one question. I have a complaint. I'd like to come with the city on a street improvement. But there is a question. I've heard recently that the paving on the First Ward, Emerson Avenue, they have to pave and curving, etc. I live on Sumner, and it's in dire need of repaving and curving. And I would like to know, from what I hear here, that is stopping on Emerson. Is this gonna be a continual, or is it stopping? This I'd really need to know because I have potholes that actually I could put in a, I would say, what we call it, fine for breaking, for messing up the rims of the car. This street is really getting bad shape, and everyone there is a homeowner. There are more traffic on Sumner Avenue than there is on Emerson Avenue. So I would like to know, from the council, anyone here, what are their intentions? What are your intentions as far as Sumner Avenue? This actually is, it leads into Emerson School. It's the backside of it. So there's Emerson Avenue, there's Sumner. Sumner, I've complained years and years and years about it. And the traffic there is actually, is probably one of the most traffic-laden streets, isn't it, whole area? They run through there like forty, fifty miles an hour. We do need curving. You've got, what do you call those, railroad tires on the side? Is there any plans in the near future to repave the streets that I live on, which is Sumner? Yes, no, on to us, Senator.
Mr. Tolliver, we don't have a chart set up. I will go back and look at the chart and see where you are, where Sumner Avenue is on that chart.
Sumner, Sumner, Sumner.
No better for...
Sumner.
Okay. Well, I just like, I actually like to know because that street, I have many years have lived there, and I have complained about the potholes. They fill them, and, you know, next thing you know, the trucks, trucks come through, you name it. It is a very bad disarray. Thank you.
With respect to Mr. Reeves' asked question also, I will look on the schedule in response to Mr. Tolliver, as well as the governor body.
Thank you.
How is Emily nine thirty-seven, Hillside Avenue? I just tried to stand up before because I didn't know the rules. But I just wanted to point out that over the course of the last decade, the board of trustees at the Drake House have raised over seven hundred thousand dollars. And we did come to the city for a match, and there was some confusion, I think because Pizza Bellia had left, and there was that issue that we came to the council for the fifty-two thousand. But we understand the situation in the county, and we look for other sources for matching funds. Very often, we can get a grant from the state to match the county grant, and/or we have to write to foundations and other organizations. So I just wanted you to know that it is possible. It's not easy, but it is possible to raise funds for this type of preservation.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Harold, you're circling to the street, Cushing Road. I want to thank the council for making me feel that I'm not the twenty-first-century Don Quixote. And I do thank Acting City Administrator Jackson for removing two seventy thirteen from the consent agenda. I don't know how I missed that. I did have it on my pre-meeting list. But of course, any amendment to the budget should not be on a consent agenda. I don't believe that. I want to briefly speak about Zimmerman saying. And I first want to say that the Attorney General Holder has announced that the federal government and its department are going to thoroughly investigate to see if there is basis for federal action in this particular case. And I think it will be found something about, it could not be for murder or killing, of course, which Zimmerman is guilty of. But unfortunately, it was found not guilty because of the Florida laws. And being, he's not declared innocent, and we know he's not innocent. So I think the depriving, which is an unfortunate term, the civil rights would be probably the only and difficult course that the government can do. You are going to pass the resolution and send it on, and I don't know whether we, the public, will have a chance to comment on it. I think because you're a government body, and we all stand up here and make a pledge to really uphold the laws of this country. And the laws of this country provide a jury trial by peers that supposedly is the unblemished trial. We can be disappointed, upset about the findings of the jury. I think we have to take granted that the jury acted in their best capabilities. So being outraged is a little bit strong. We don't like it. We should express that we don't like their decision. And we certainly should add to the order for appealing to the government, federal government, to take action in this area. As I said before, I'm sure they will. And I just hope that the resolution, which your board of senators did before we ever have a chance to look at it, will not express a outrage. That's one more that I hope that we should do because we are dedicated, and you're dedicated, in upholding the laws of this country.
My name is Sandra Teller-Liams. I live at three one-two, New Street here in Plainfield. We have freedom of speech here in this country, so I have the right to say anything I think I have to say. It's a shame, if I go over my time limit, could you please allow me extra time? It's sad how the council sits up here, and I guess just what arguments it says? Don't respect each other? It's sad. It's really sad. And some of you need to speak out about it. How do you think you look to us out here on this side? How do you think you look? It's really, really sad. And another thing, we come here to tell you about our problems. If we have an issue, we go to City Hall to see the department or drive down to the straight now. They tell us, "Well, if you don't like it or nothing to be done, come to the council meeting." We come here to you guys. You give us five minutes to speak. We don't get any answers, maybe every now and then. So who do we go to to get an answer when we have a problem? Who do we go to? You sit there, you don't say anything. You don't, except if it's maybe something, a little giddy-bitty thing. But when you, when we have major problems, who and where do we go to to get answers? We can't go to Mr. Berry. We can't go to your mayor. She's never here. So who do we go to get answers to our problems? We need to know this. And when we have problems, what gets done about it? No one looks into the issues. We come here with complaints about this, what's going on in our city, where we pay the taxes, and we still don't get any results. I have an issue with Mrs. Brown, Sharon Brown, down there at the center. No one has looked into it. Poor them. It doesn't make sense. I have people's names, telephone numbers. People have even given me notes and letters about this woman. No one investigates. No one goes to see about it. I don't even feel I care. I don't know. Not only me, other people have issues with her also, and no one does anything about it. Is it so that she can't be, what? Looked at or see if she's doing wrong or think she's done wrong, or what? People act like they're afraid of her. I don't know why. I'm not. I feel that you treat me the way you want to be treated. You don't take advantage of me because you have power and you can do what you want. That woman does anything down there at that center that she wants, and she answers to no one, to no one. And you guys don't do anything about it. You don't look into it. I'll look into it if you don't even care enough. I have no idea. And it's ridiculous. When she brings you down there, it's all goodies and smiles and faces and things that she do. But people are not down there every day to see how this woman treats these seniors. A lot of people are intimidated by her. They're afraid of her. Why? I don't know. She walks around there barefoot. She does anything at that center that she wants, and no one, and she doesn't answer to anyone. And no one has, I guess, don't care. I don't know. But something needs to be done. I have come here several times, a year or two almost. Nothing is done. And I keep saying I'm gonna have to go out of state. But look, I'm gonna have to go out of state, out of country, everything else? Go to, contact the freeholders, contact the representatives, even go to the president? Because you guys aren't doing anything. You don't care. It just seems like to me, I don't know what it is. But something needs to be done. And as council people, that I love you all dearly, but I'm not in love with money. Just like that lady said a couple of weeks ago from upstate, how you guys get out of the street, you hum it and ask people to vote for you? I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. But once you get in office, what do you do? It's something needs to be done. And as far as the center, I would like to know if there's any kind of way that we can get an advisory board down there with people, with members, not handpicked people by Sharon. We had an election back in January that this woman came in and took over completely. She has no business being at a membership meeting at all. She bullied the ballot box. She wouldn't let me go to see what was in it, how many votes were put in it by her maybe, you know, earlier or whatever. We don't know. She had no business even being in the meeting, and she took the meeting over. Now, you know that's not right. So she's getting charges brought up on her against that. A lot of charges. Harassment, taking advantage of people. How are you gonna tell a member when donuts come in from his shop that she doesn't even own, that they're donated to the center? He's gotta eat the stale ones first before he can have the fresh ones. You, that's not your business. Those aren't your donuts. She has said so many things. Well, she did, you guys laugh, but that's what she told about. He went to get some coffee, and while he was standing in there, the new donuts came in. Oh, no, you eat the stale ones first. You can't have the fresh ones enough. Those are not her donuts. I mean, there's so many things that happen down there. It's ridiculous. She tells people they can't eat certain foods, but she can give her staff birthday parties in the same conference room where no one else can take food? This woman is crazy. And I have told her that. It's ridiculous. Somebody needs to check into what's going on at that center. If you're not there to eat by twelve o'clock, you don't eat. That's not her food. You can't tell people that. You can't go in the pool room and take the guy's money that they save for the guys to play when they have pool tournaments and take their money. That's not your money. That's just what she did. But they raised so much pain about it. She said, "Oh, I'll put it back." But she hadn't been saying it in the first place. There's so many things down there this woman has done that it needs to be looked into. And like I said, is there any way that we can get an advisory board down there for things that are, that have gone mad that need to be corrected that we can complain about to you guys? Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, could you get in touch with this Sandra Teller and give the council a written response as to some of these accusations?
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Because I do want to make a comment.
Yes.
Not for debate, but I think when a citizen stands up in public in the microphone and calls, I think if I understood, a staff person was being described as crazy.
Well, she was.
Excuse me, I'm not.
I'm sorry, you're right.
I'm not looking for a response. I think it's inappropriate. And I think if you have, if you have a strong concern about a staff person, then you file a written grievance and you go through the proper channels and you don't come to the public microphone and call a staff person crazy. I object to that and I think our staff deserve better treatment. If they did something wrong, it would come out in an investigation. And I would like to know, and this is a question I'd like to have added to the, to the, I guess, the beginning of the meeting when the council, when the council gets answers to questions. I would like to know, do we have a formal grievance procedure at the senior center? And has it been followed in this instance? I don't need to know the detail, I just want to know. Because if you're gonna make an accusation and you're gonna call people names, you better be able to back it up with some facts, some concrete evidence, not just vague allegations. Thank you.
Stick some finger. Right in front of the senior. Yes, ma'am. You're right. You're right. Excuse me, I'm sorry, you're right.
Nancy Thewar, vote twenty-nine, Mar-a-Lago. Um, I want to thank the council for their vision tonight on voting on the Lampkin House. Back in nineteen twenty-one, a group of West Enders got together with a civic association and saved the Drake House from demolition. The city council then took on the property. They passed it on from that organization to the city. And they had a vision. And we're here almost like councilwoman Williams said, it's almost a hundred years later. And they had a vision. I think one of the things the city council can also do as regards to the Lampkin House, the Drake House and the other revolutionary war sites in the city of Plainfield, including Greenwood Park, is to join as a partner with Crossroads for the American Revolution. That is a national heritage site. Unfortunately, when it first got started, I was involved with it and I was advocating on behalf of the Drake House and other areas in Plainfield. And some of the areas in this central Jersey area were left off. But I understand that we can petition the Congress, Congress will hold, to try to get our areas on. I think that that would be a viable thing. But the first step is the city has to sign on as a partner with Crossroads for the American Revolution. We have a battlefield site in the city. There is battlefield protection money. Jesse Dobier was in the Revolutionary War. Three of the Drakes were in the Revolutionary War, including their free slave Caesar, who was in the Revolutionary War. There are a lot of other sites in the city, including the Fitz Randolph House. That house did not get destroyed during the Revolutionary War. There were no damages. You can look it up in the state archives. There is so much that we can do as far as cultural heritage tourism. But I also want you to understand that with the Lampkin House as well as the Drake House, there is another way of raising money and that's through genealogy tourism. Yesterday, unexpectedly, four people drove up to the Drake House from the state of Oklahoma. They were Drake ancestors. I spent almost seven hours with my daddy, taking them around, talking to them, going through genealogy. The Lampkin House has the Dobiers, it has the Ware family, it also has the Ackerman family. If you go on theschistory.com, that's all arranged now. Who do you think you are? This city has, because the Drake House was put on the National Register in nineteen seventies already, you can go down, there's a beautiful exhibit there right now, go look at it and look at the history. There are ten sites in the city that are our district centers, twenty-one individual sites. And we have pictures of them that came off the National Register down there on exhibit through the end of August. The visual is amazing what private citizens have done to preserve the history in this town. And that is an economic engine. These people from Oklahoma unfortunately had to get a hotel in Somerset County, okay? That they spent their money in. It's a lot of money that came out of one little visit to the Drake House. They had to buy gas, they had to buy food and they specifically came because of genealogy tourism. And there's a lot of other people. I've also entertained people from Maryland this year. And there's a whole lot of other states that I've entertained in the Drake House. And so have other members of the board and trustee there. And so the first step is to get the city as a partner with the Crossroads for the American Revolution. And then we can move on from there and I'd be happy to help you. I've talked about this at the county level and I believe they're now on board. And so we just have to keep moving forward. And it's also a way to teach our children American history that's been sanitized through the years. And we have to get this through to these kids and these kids are getting it. They're getting it and they're impressed that George Washington was in Plainfield. Thank you.
Sandy Gershman, nine fifty-seven, that was the map. As always, Nancy said it best, so I'm not gonna bring up any of the stuff she's already covered. But I do thank you for giving the Lampkin House a new lease on life and an opportunity to come back from the dead or the near dead. I have two questions that have nothing to do with Lampkin House. One is about the warehouse fire down in West End off of Front Street the other day. I'm concerned about the fire hydrant that was discovered not to be working because it makes me wonder if the one in front of my house is working. So who's responsible? Why wasn't it working? What's being done to make sure that the rest of them are working? Okay, that's one set of questions. The other question I have is related to the smoking ordinance that you all just passed. I'm assuming that signs are going up to alert people that they can't smoke. So I wanted to know, is that budget, has that been budgeted for? And how many signs are there going to be? And what's the plan to keep those signs intact? Because we know what happens to signs.
Signs are free.
Signs are free.
Well, that's great.
Yeah.
Free is good. I mean, somebody's paying for it, but we're not.
I think the state.
Well, it's our money anyway. It's coming out of a different pocket. So I have a third question that relates to signs and that is, I've got a number of signs around town, including one right outside this building, which you can't read because they're so old and faded. And it's not just my eyesight, they really can't be read. And is there some sort of plan to replace, you know, to make note of those signs and replace them? I mean, the short answer would be yes, but.
The short answer is absolutely yes. We're now engaged in inventory of our signage in the city and trying to put together a plan on how to phase in restoration. And we've begun in small areas of doing that, but we're looking at it comprehensively now through my street yard department division.
Good, thank you. So I guess the next time we'll hear about the fire hydrants?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tim Rickert, seventy twenty-three Arlington Avenue. I have something to say about the Zimmerman case, which essentially was tried extensively in the press. And I think you have various levels of news coverage and I think that it depends on what news sources you are following, what you can understand of the various aspects of the trial. And based on what the jury was presented with, I don't think they could conscientiously have rendered any other verdict than the one that they did. And also, I just want to hand in to the city council something which is a summary of what Ellen Dershowitz thought about the subject. And he thought that rather than Zimmerman being investigated at the federal level for violation of civil rights, the prosecutors in Florida and their office should be investigated for that. So I think it pays to look at both sides of the mission. That's what I'm saying on that.
Thank you.
I move that we...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Have a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?